Our planning board forum on what is a master plan? Thank you. We're gonna do a videotape. It's essentially for archival purposes. The main reason we're here today is a kind of generalized discussion about what's a master plan and what isn't a master plan and what we're doing related to it, what the next steps are. So it's an educational session. We have been talking with the Metropolitan Area Planning Council, the MAPC, about doing a first phase on our, on review of our master plan that we put together in 2004. What the best practices are for communities like ours in Eastern Massachusetts regarding planning and master plans and the planning board's responsibilities for that. We've also asked the MAPC to do, to give us the information where we can put together an RFP for a second phase. So the planning for the master plan, which is what we're in a phase in right now, is to get a first phase, get the MAPC, get a planner, have a couple of sessions with us and a public session, get some public outreach surveys, recording videos of the master plan process, because a lot of people don't know what it really is. And generally describe the master plan as a really useful tool for making long-range decisions and creating, you know, feeling, I don't know if you read in the paper, the newspapers quoted me as saying, "People feeling in control of their destiny." And it's hard to feel in control when, you know, real estate values are continuing to go up, those unbuilt parcels are getting snapped up and projects are being built. You know, we have a lot of, I'd say, growth in the last several years with Avalon and especially the 3A Northern Commercial District. There's been problems associated with that growth. So updating and putting together an updated master plan and getting the perspective of an industry expert or two is gonna be useful. But I think we have some options. I mean, we got a certain amount, I think it was $25,000, approved at town meeting for the purposes of this Phase One. And there are some DTLA monies that the state has for MAPC to do some other tasks related to the master plan. So not, the town doesn't have to pay the full freight for the planning exercise. So this is generally, you know, gonna be a discussion session where I'm gonna go through the outline that the MAPC planner gave to me that I saw a presentation for about a month ago. And what I'd like to do is have anybody stop me in the middle and ask questions or if there's any related comments. I don't know, before I get started, if anyone on the board has anything specific? Anyone who's here, any specific comments or questions?
Not yet.
There's no sound with this, with this presentation other than the sound of my voice?
No music.
No dramatic music. But, you know, a general overview is a master plan defined, the purposes of a master plan, the legal requirements, contents, what would be a normal timeline. And this is set up kind of generically. It's sort of a cell tool for MAPC where they can kind of demystify, what's a master plan? How long does it take? What does it cost? What is this? What's that? So that's what we're, what we're looking at. Getting started, planning and zoning. So what is a master plan? It's a number of things. A future vision and policy guide for the town, plan for communities, physical evolution. That may sound esoteric, but it could mean it involves zoning, what things look like, how things, how land gets used, land use issues, comprehensive analysis of all aspects of community development. It's long range, usually five to 15 years. It's not a zoning bylaw or regulation. It's a public policy document. Any questions about that? Yeah?
Does the plan itself then have the effect of a bylaw or a law or is, when this is all done, what are we gonna have in terms of?
No, no, it's, like I said, it's a public policy document. And I'm sorry, your name was?
Kevin McCarthy.
Yeah, Kevin. No, I mean, some bylaws were written as a result of the 2004 master plan, but it's not a zoning bylaw. There's nothing that's binding or changing or altering of the existing land use policy that we have in place right now. Okay, so this is the funny thing. Why plan? We usually do our long-range planning at the last minute. It should be self-explanatory and I think I should be offended that it looks like it's an architect on the, in the cartoon.
I don't look like you.
An architect, but... You know, it's interesting, it's similar to the architectural process, I think, doing planning, urban planning, master planning, where you're establishing policy over a long, long period of time that can have lasting, a lasting impact. But similar to architecture, it's a process where you're going through sort of logical steps and you don't know what the, what the end, what the end conclusions are gonna be. You're moving through the process and I think trying to keep your big picture goals in mind while you're working out the details. So you have to lend yourself to the fact that it's a process. You know, the master plan isn't a product, although there are, there is a product at the end. It's, any questions about that? Guys? Product, details, process? Master plan helps communities manage growth and change, provide for orderly and predictable development, protect environmental resources, set priorities for developing and maintaining infrastructure and public facilities, strengthen local identity, create a framework for future policy decisions, promote open democratic planning. I don't think democratic is like a Republican or Democratic. I think it's, it's, that's not a, that's not a party affiliation plan. And then provide guidance to landowners' development and permitting authorities. A couple of those really kind of pop out at me as being critical for our community. The managing the growth and change, that seems like it's at the top of the list, but that's sort of, to me, number one, where the past master plan committee was called the Growth and Development Committee. But I think we've seen a lot of growth and change in the last several years, certainly the last 10 years, quite a bit of growth and change. And trying to figure out ways to manage where we've come and what the, what the new set of problems are is something a master plan can help with. Any questions about that?
I got a question about that.
Yeah, go ahead.
So it says, because in the last frame it was saying how it doesn't, it's not-
Not a zoning bylaw.
It's not a zoning or a bylaw.
Yeah.
So in one hand, how could it not be a zoning? It's not something that's enforceable, but it's all, but in the other hand, it's gonna protect, you know, the, our goals and our missions for the way the development of the town goes.
Sure.
And how is it anything more than just a piece of paper where people have spent times, you know, a group of people say, "This is what we'd like the current direction of the community going."
Yeah.
But how is there anything more than that?
It could, it could just be a piece of paper. I mean, you know, I think, like much in life, you get out of it what you put into it. And one of the problems, I'd say, of our 2004 master plan was that there wasn't much funding. There was very little local funding. It was basically a grant to create the master plan. We got a consultant on board and I think with a certain amount of volunteerism, it was cobbled together. But there, there are a number of what I'd consider weak sections of that master plan and it's 11 years old. So I'd still say you get out of it sort of what you put into it. And if, let me just, and if we have a process that has, that reaches out to the public, to municipal people that are committed to municipal involvement, volunteerism, through volunteerism or holding office, I think we're likely to have a document that's really useful for making those long-term decisions that people are committed to. Diane, you wanted to make a point?
You can take Sam first.
You want me to go first?
Yeah.
Sam Wakeman.
Hi, Sam.
I just have a question about, in looking at the 2004 master plan, how useful has that been to the town in terms of zoning bylaw changes, planning ahead and so forth?
Well, I'd say partly useful. You know, that it, certainly the village, the village changes, I think, were a direct result of something that was identified in the master plan, allowing a densification of the village in order to create vitality and, because I'd say, you know, 10, 11, 12 years ago, it was identified, the village was identified and as a sort of undeveloped resource, a kind of, it couldn't move forward, it couldn't move backward because zoning overlay didn't really allow some of the things that the planners believed would allow it to kind of flourish, for businesses to be successful. Rents were, I think at the time, kind of low, you know, really at the time, it was the Red Lion Inn and not much else kind of was going on back then. So that's, that's made a difference. But like I said, some of the sections in the 2004 were weak, particularly the transportation But, let's see, the good news is, and I'm just gonna jump around a little bit, the good news is a number of the contents of the master plan that we'd be updating, what we have and we'll be updating it, have already have had significant looks at over the last 11 years. For example, the housing status has substantially changed. Instead of being one of the lowest at affordable housing in the state, we're kind of one of the highest, I think, for a town, for like a, especially for a town with our demographics and size. So that's, you know, that's helped us kind of control our destiny with 40B. As well as there's an open space, an updated open space plan so that when we actually get the consultants, we'll get all of our documents, there's a lot less than starting from scratch. I don't know if that helps, but the strength in local identity, to me, is another significant part of how a master plan helps community. I mean, we could, we could, we all think about, I guess, some of us, maybe not all of us, but some of us think about brand co-hasset, like what does co-hasset mean to all of us? And I think all of us that have lived here for a short time and a long time have an unusual sense of commitment to the community. That's a part of that. But if we could use a document to strengthen that local identity with our meetings and what the contents of the master plan, I'd say that's a, that's a good thing. Any particular comments on that? Brand co-hasset, that could be a controversial term.
You gonna market it?
Well, you know, I mean, in a way, co-hasset is marketed to the general public by real estate agents and, you know, with, with having excellent school systems, you know, with having a kind of, what I'd call, consider a conservative kind of infrastructure. I mean, I've, I've almost been here 20 years and I like co-hasset because the buildings look good in general, not all of them, but a lot of them. And that said something to me where people were committed to how things looked, that it mattered to them. Yeah, Diane?
Diane Kennedy, oh, just, you know, one of the comments that we hear all the time, I think for those of us out on the street, is, you know, it's such and such is happening and it's ruining the character. So being able to give words, what is, what does that mean? I think this conversation's gonna be very helpful. What is, what does that mean? For some people, it means, "I don't want any more houses, I don't want any more tall buildings, I don't want houses." Those in a robust, well-constructed plan by, done by professionals with the input of everybody will ultimately, assuming we don't stick it on ourself, will likely result in zoning, I don't wanna say changes, but at least, you know, the opportunity to go to town meeting and say, "Okay, here's what we've decided we want co-hasset to look like, feel like, retain, because we've identified what the local character is or the local identity and we've, we are being proactive in anticipating where growth might go and what is important to people." And then somebody might say, "All right, so we're gonna do a bylaw and you can't build a house unless, and make something outrageous so it doesn't get in the paper that I said we should put, you know, a, whatever. You need like nine acres in order to build a new house."
Right.
You know, that kind of, some, some good work will come out of it when we do it right.
And we have something for the village, some design guidelines, that something, those kinds of tools can make a difference. I mean, it's America. You don't wanna be prescriptive about what people can do with their land. On the other hand, we do have, you know, I think there's a sense of fairness where nobody wants to see a bright yellow stucco house with red trim next to theirs if they've, if they've made an investment in their own property and there's something that just doesn't fit. It's America, you can do that. But, you know, that strengthening that, the local identity and having things that have a sense of fit, it's a bit esoteric and hard to do. Things like the large home review really help, even though the large home review doesn't really have strong teeth, we just basically make a recommendation to the building inspector and he can follow our recommendation or not. But what it does is it makes people who are serious bring their A-game to try and get approval. And, you know, we, we consider what's in front of us carefully and generally vote in favor of what's, what's being presented unless there's something that jumps out as a part of that process. So that also, the large home review came out of that 2004 master plan. And then the final thing that jumped out at me as a part of this, how the master plan helps communities, is providing guidance to landowners, developers and permitting authorities. And really, the planning board and the ZBA, we, sometimes we need some big picture guidance for what, to make decisions, big, kind of a big picture sense of right and wrong, if you will, morality to making decisions, a foundation. And as well, landowners wanna know what could, they could get approved or what would likely be rejected. And there's a sense of fairness, I think, to everybody, you know, where if there's... so that we're moving kind of together as opposed to the only landowners or developers who can, can do a project are the ones that have such deep pockets that they can kind of propose anything and have a reasonable likelihood that they'll be able to get it through by persevering over time and filing lawsuits, things like that. Where we really wanna find out what, what kind of growth do we, do we want in the future? And 90% of people might answer that question, "We don't want any growth. Place is crowded enough as it is. And it's not as, not a tenth as crowded as Quincy or Weymouth, but we don't care. We like it. It's perfect. We don't want it to get messed up, so don't build any more houses or build any more businesses." Which isn't, it's not really a practical approach, but it's, it may be the sentiment that a lot of people have.
Clark?
Yeah.
Yeah, recognizing that a master plan has ultimately guidance and therefore has no force of, you know, law or regulation. What, if any, kind of carrots and sticks makes sense to build into a master plan? And by that, I mean, just in terms of, you know, subdivision, in terms of the ability to put in solar panels for, for instance. If the orientation of, you know, a certain percentage of the homes in the subdivision are north-south as opposed to east-west, it's much, you know, a southern orientation, you know, it's much more amenable to solar panels, for instance.
Right, this, this is a detail, but, you know, in the past, we've talked about, like, there's a, there's a bonus density concept where if, if a developer has 80% of their roofs, if they're within 15% of due south so that they could be, they're considered solar-ready, maybe they get a 10% bonus density by providing that, not everybody's gonna wanna have solar panels, but it makes sense, because whenever I see a subdivision, you know, I see all the kind of the randomness of, of where houses are kind of located relative to northeast, where the sun comes, where it goes. The worst thing, I think, is when they put a garage on the sunny side and the, on the south side and then the house is actually all in shade, most of the, for most of the year, except for strong east-west sun. So bonus density is a way to kind of provide an incentive. That would be something that could be suggested, could be kind of crafted as a part of master planning, but it's really a zoning, zoning thing.
It seems like, just from what I'm hearing from you, the 2004 master plan, it does wind up, if you have a strong master plan and really a lot of dive effort and input from the community takes place, there is, there are things that come out of that.
Yeah.
That's what I'm hearing from you from the, from the 2004.
Even though it wasn't adopted by the, by the planning board, it did, it was used as a, I mean, I think it's still used to some extent as a way to help make decisions, like what was everyone thinking 10 to 15 years ago about the future and how close are we to that? Any, any other?
No, I just wanted to clarify what you were just saying. So in other words, like, in the ma, in the master plan, it may be identified that we wanna do, we wanna do something to incentivize developers, for example.
Yeah.
To look into more alternative energy resources. So that would be in the, that would be something within the master plan, but then that might precipitate then a bylaw change.
Right.
Or that would offer some kind of incentive.
Yeah.
Or whatever, right.
That's right, because there's a whole implementation section. I mean, in the 2004, there's a stewardship of master plan and then implementation.
Yeah, it makes sense.
So there was like a period where people were really involved and then sort of, things sort of dropped off a little bit. Al?
Clark, Al Moore. I was listening with great interest and you're right, you know, the, the current master plan is a plan, but it was never adopted. And by law, it's the planning board, you guys, they get to adopt it, not the selectmen. It's interesting how that works. And there was a lot of effort put into it, but at the end of the day, when I was on the board, it, the reason it wasn't adopted was there was some good stuff in it, but there was a lot of stuff in it that, that wasn't so good. And part of it was that the, and again, I'm not pointing a finger at anybody. I mean, there were a lot of volunteers, there were people brought in, everybody did their best, but the data collection and the validity was pitiful. It was, it was not, you would, if you looked at some of the raw data that came in and the way it was collected, you would, you would have been convinced that the number one issue facing the town was what to do with ledge on Beach Street. And that, I don't laugh, I mean, that was just, that, that just, you were curbing.
At that time period, that was, that was on people's minds.
Whoever collected the data had never taken statistics one-on-one. You know, they mailed out to the entire town and then said, "Oh, we got a 20% response, now we know what to do." Well, it doesn't work that way. You have to, you only got the people responding that had an accident. Right. So, but, but I don't know.
So Al, that's, that's true. What we, what we're anticipating for our Phase One is public meetings, more of these sessions though, with people with degrees in urban planning and not just the chairman of the planning board talking. Public outreach sessions and surveys. If you have any specific ideas on how to best reach the people that you think personally could influence and create a master plan that would be most effective, let us know. Let me know or send me an email.
But if I could just finish, I didn't stand up to criticize that. I wanted to make the point that, that there was a lot, there was a lot of data that was not leading to a correct result, but the idea of a plan is great. But in answer to another question that you, was raised, is, you know, what, what strength does this document have? Well, we don't have a document. It was never approved.
But we do have the document.
We have the document.
Just because the planning board didn't, didn't approve it.
No, we didn't approve.
We have the document and it's been used by committees.
It doesn't exist as a master plan in the eyes of the state, right? And we were, I, when I was still on the board, I, at the very end, I had a developer basically threaten me saying, you know, "Well, your, your master plan says we can do this and it doesn't agree with zoning and we're gonna sue you." And thank God, we didn't have a master plan that had been approved, so they couldn't do that.
That's not, that's not the case. I mean, anybody in America can say they're gonna sue anyone for any reason whatsoever. But I don't think that's the, I don't think that's the point of being afraid of a master plan now.
I'm just saying, my point is simply to, let me finish, that I think as you go forward, and I do, I'm not trying to be negative, I think it's great.
Oh, I appreciate that.
Collect the data, do it properly, but, but I do think it's important that you recognize that the hard part of it is not sitting down and coming up with these great ideas. The hard part is then spreading out the zoning and making sure that it interfaces with what the master plan says. Because if, for example, your master plan says, "Gee, we think it's a wonderful idea to have affordable housing, but your zoning says you've gotta have 10 acres to build a house," that's not gonna work and, and somebody will eventually challenge one or the other on that and say, "It doesn't work." And I think one of the hard parts is that after the master plan is developed, it really has to be looked at by many eyes, by many people who are knowledgeable and gone through the zoning and say, "Well, where does it fit and where does it not fit?" That, that's my point.
True.
I just think that's, and that's, that's a lot of work. That's the hard, the hard and exciting part, but it's gotta be done.
That makes sense. And one thing I have heard in the past is something called inclusionary zoning has been adopted by a number of towns. And inclusionary zoning is one way to kind of get a handle on affordable housing in 40B and create affordable units. And it's been challenged in court and even though, shoot, I think there's 30 or 40 towns that have inclusionary zoning requiring a certain percentage of affordability or you give money to a fund, even though it's been challenged, some, these towns have used them If a developer wants to have a project move forward and they conform with every requirement, whether it's been challenged by the courts successfully or not, that, that's, that's the developer's option. And, but that wouldn't be in the master plan. This is a whole other kind of separate implementation into, into zoning and trying to decide what, what parts make sense to implement right away and what other ones that you'd have to wait and see. And I'm sorry, I don't know your name.
Ed Wadsworth.
What was it?
Ed Wadsworth.
Got it. Ed, you had a point?
Yeah, I, I'm an environmental lawyer. I've been a corporate securities lawyer for 35 years and then I saw the light and became an environmental lawyer the last 15. You know, there's a lot of, a great deal of planning going on, on towns on both sides of us.
Yeah.
Most of it relates more to sea level rise and that type of phenomena.
Sure.
And it seems to me that that sort of sits, maybe not as an 800-pound drill, but- And it seems to me that that sort of sits, maybe not as an eight-hundred-pound gorilla, but maybe a five-hundred-pound gorilla, that issue. Although we are partially protected by our by our granite faces, our rocks. No question that if it turns out that the probabilities that scientists are reasonably in agreement with come to pass, that it's gonna become an issue in Cohasset increasingly.
Right.
In fact, at some point, if it if it follows the path that at least the Chicken Littles of the world see it happening, and probably even those who aren't Chicken Littles, it's gonna become a dominant issue in Cohasset. It's gonna be a matter of, I mean, right now, you know, a couple of feet, and you've got Jacob's Pond and Summer Street and Elm Street at risk. You've got Treat's Pond area at risk, you've got the Gavin's Road.
Yeah.
Even, you know, this is happening, and you say long-term is fifteen years. I mean, though, one of the, one of the issues, I think, in all of this that runs through is, what can we do? What can we do to 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 preserve?
Right, have an effective town.
You know, if the worst, and I'm not saying this is gonna happen, but but the worst scenario is how can we save some of the neighborhoods who otherwise be demolished?
Right.
And hurt. And it seems to me that if we knew what they were and what the alternatives were, we might be able to act now to solve a lot of things and make it better. And maybe, you know, instead of having an area become uninhabitable in, you know, two oh seven oh, it will have another hundred years of something along that line. I mean, I think of such things, I mean, Little Harbor is a strange, as you folks know, it was it was pastureland at one point.
Right.
And the question is, and there's a lot of very expensive houses around there that pay a lot of taxes. And what happens? Does it break through at the beach? Does it, or alternatively, would it be a better idea to dam it again? I I have absolutely no idea. I have absolutely no idea, but I'm just saying that.
The Cuba Dam, it was a salt flat, right? That he was hit to create salt?
No, my my, it it was ninety-three acres of pasture. And they.
And you had salt works in it also.
Yeah.
Yeah, like the salt works, that was minor.
I like that.
But the primary, when it broke through in eighteen fifty-one,
Yeah.
the same time, the same storm that took down the first mine site, as a matter of fact.
And St. John, was it? No, different?
I don't think that was the same.
Was it?
There was, play your storms and play your ledgers, I'm not sure.
Yeah.
But.
So we're not stuck, we're not stuck with five to fifteen years in terms of like the master plans, like overall. You know, it could be as little as five, it could be as as many as fifty. And sea level rise is a a big issue for homeowners. It's sort of rewriting what the value of waterfront property that's in the flood plain could could have.
Absolutely, it's a number of consequences that are far-reaching indeed. But it seems to me, I mean, I I almost said, when I first read this, number one, I I had written letters. I I grew up in Cohasset. I spent a number of years away in New York City or Boston practicing practicing corporate law, so. But I always kept track of Cohasset, I was probably one of the few people who wrote a long letter to the back in two oh oh three. However, I mean, it strikes me it's a matter of of considerable importance, and I just wonder whether we need a companion, how we handle this aspect, how this aspect is handled, whether it's a companion effort that goes simultaneously with the master plan, whether it's a subset of the master plan. But I honestly don't think the master plan can avoid it. It's it, you know, if things go the way people anticipate, it's gonna become a bigger and bigger and bigger and bigger.
Yeah, and you're right. Hull, Situip, Marshfield, they're all significantly more vulnerable
I understand that.
To sea level rise than we are.
Look at Hull.
But it's still an issue.
It absolutely, and as I say, I mean, Jacobs, Jacobs, I mean, I remember seventy-eight, and I remember all the flooding that was, you know, in a lot of people's backyards, in Home Street and Summer Street and what have you, 'cause those are very vulnerable. So this, if we avoid that issue, we avoid a very significant issue. I don't think it could be a master plan unless that issue is at least dealt with and put in a, put in a little pocket anyway, saying, this can do. Anyway, I just.
Thank you.
Yeah.
Kevin McCarthy, there's a comment and a question now. One is, this is a very difficult world that was in two thousand and four, there's a lot more opportunity for inclusion through social media and communication, where you can get a huge, a lot of input.
That's right.
Be something like a governmental organizations doing something like, someone frequently put up a Facebook page or something, where people could put their comments and stuff on. So I just thought that I'm sure you're thinking of, but as you go forward.
The consultant has suggested the, you know, all those outreach outreach sources to collect opinion, facts.
They're very powerful, yeah, right, they're very powerful nowadays, yeah.
Yeah, that's a good point. There's a lot of tools, and we wanna use.
You wanna use all those nowadays.
Yeah, we don't wanna use just.
I think we get a lot of people.
Mail-out surveys.
I mean, that's good, but nowadays, a lot of people, you'll you'll get a lot more input that way, and I think you're well aware of that.
Sure.
Going forward. The other was just a brief question, who, and who's the final approv- you approve the plan, a master plan? Does it go in for a town meeting, approve this?
Well, we don't have to approve it, once we put it together, and we're jumping around a little bit, but you know, if it, let's just say it takes a year to get a full updated master plan. Might take two, might take three, could could take longer, but the planning board could vote on it, there's reasons to vote on it. It used to be we'd get a higher com cap score, Commonwealth capitalization, so that we apply for, we'd be eligible for better, more grants from the state. And that was, you know, one box that you check along with lots of other things. That's just an example of what a potential benefit might be for having it adopted by the planning board, master plan. But that's a good segue for the the state requirements, and there is a master general law that requires planning boards to put together a master plan with... Sorry, Sam, did you have another point?
No.
Okay.
No.
All right, I'm just gonna keep going then, and jump in, anyone can jump in whenever you want. Statement of goals and policies, kind of an inventory of land use, housing, economic development, cultural and natural resources, open space, recreation services and facilities, circulation and implementation. Circulation, circulation is like, I think like roads.
Roads, pedestrians.
Roads could be pedestrian ways, paths, as well as stuff for cars.
Tails close.
Yeah, balloons areas, Zeppelin landing.
That's true, huh?
And this is, this is an interesting thing, local additions. Communities often supplement the requirements by adding elements that focus on specific local needs of policy interests. So as a part of the planning process, like villages, neighborhoods, like neighborhoods that you're talking about, how to protect neighborhoods? And then smart growth, energy, climate action, sustainability, education, governance, public health and social services. So out of the last master plan, village was a kind of important outcropping of that process. Smart growth is sort of a buzzword, but, you know, energy, climate action was the... So any of these sort of subsets of the overall master plan could be, could be like brought as a higher focus as a part of the master plan process. Okay, so what's in a master plan? It's hard to read that. I can't even read it from here. Community vision statement, data analysis, existing conditions, trends, estimates and future projections, goals, policies and actions, and maps. Last master plan, the maps were created by a special consultant outside of the original kind of master planner process. We would probably, as this, for this process, try and integrate those. Some of the maps were, some of the maps were good. I mean, I still have a copy of this master plan, and do we still have the old master plan online?
I believe we do.
Yeah. So that the public can can access, what was everyone thinking eleven years ago? It was online, I I haven't seen it online in a few years, but I haven't looked for it. So this, the person who put this slideshow together is Ralph Wilmer from the M A P C. And he had an emerging issues list, demographic changes, social media and aging infrastructure, more urban lifestyle development near transit, climate change, antiquated zoning, shrinking tax base for local governments, public health, energy, building codes and materials. Those are just fragments, I think, fragments of ideas that the master plan issues can be. And then how long does it take? That's a big question for a lot of people. And Ralph is saying nine to nine months to two years, depending on local capacity, who's in charge, public process, community characteristics, complexity, age of the existing master plan, degree of agreement or disagreement about major community issues. That could be one that makes it, makes the process take a little bit longer. So instead of nine months, it's closer to two years because so many people are invested in trying to do the right thing and have, if we do the the master plan, have it be as effective and useful for everybody as possible. So planning and zoning track record, perceptions of local government, form of government and have and a budget. And like I said before, we do have an updated open space plan, updated housing production plan, and an eleven-year-old master plan that that a final updated master plan can can build on. Yeah, Diane?
I have a question, just about, it said in an earlier slide that you're required to have a master plan.
Yep.
Is there like a time period on that? If the state requires a master plan, do you have to replenish it every five years or ten years or?
No, but the guideline is five to ten years.
Okay. And then just another point, I do think the open space plan that came, I believe that is expiring, or whatever it was, was from year X to year Y, and this is year Y.
So it needs to be refreshed?
I think it probably would need a refreshing.
And that's, you need that in order to be eligible for CPC funds, so you don't wanna blow that. You wanna make sure that the open space plan is as updated as CPC requires.
Exactly.
Yeah. Ed?
Yeah, very quick question. Is there anything to be learned? Why the last master plan was ever adopted?
Why it wasn't adopted?
Is it fundamentally that they never did close on a number of the issues? I just wonder, if we know what happened to that one, maybe at least we can be aware of pitfalls and avoid them this time.
We we definitely would wanna do that.
Because I was very sorry that it wasn't adopted.
We would wanna do that. I mean, I I don't think it would have hurt to have it be adopted. Al has, who, as former chairman of the planning board, has some very specific ideas, and hopefully his perspective will be helpful moving forward on on that very, very issue. But we do, we do wanna have a plan that is vetted, is thorough, that everybody understands, it's serious.
I understand.
And so that it can be adopted.
Of course.
But this board, no matter what makeup it has, at the time of a master plan being finished, if you will, ready for adoption, it's hard to say what's gonna happen.
Of course.
But we would wanna, we would want it to be more thorough, and I will admit that the, even though this is, I mean, this is the the previous master plan with maps and all that. It's not, it's, it could be better. It was done on a tight budget. So it is, does have, you know, there's some downside to it.
There was a, there was a Cohasset planner then, wasn't there?
We had a professional planner that was a town employee.
I don't know how how big a role she played.
A big role.
Yeah, I mean, because you won't have that this time, I assume, though.
We don't.
You can hire anyone to do anything, I suppose.
Well, and and that's, that's really a part of the reason to have the M A P C involved.
Of course.
Where they have such a broad perspective and planners with broad perspectives on eastern Massachusetts issues, current, you know, problems. The the M A P C Sashaw rep, and what we, what we constantly find is all of these towns in this area, they're 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 dealing with the same problems at different times and with different kind of level of worry. So we can gain from the benefit of what each of us, each of the communities has done already in terms of
I said, I hope we do.
Dealing with these problems. Yeah, why not learn from the mistakes of other people as well as the the successes? Okay, so how does the master plan work? Where do we wanna go? Visioning and goal-setting, interviews with stakeholders and topic experts? And that could be that, you know, we have, we've, we've, we're gonna have planning board meetings like this one, where we have the M A P C involved. We're also gonna have a weekend session where we can pull in more public involvement. But topic experts, maybe that there's, there's people at the M A P C or that they recommend that we get for our community topic experts to help us deal with a problem. One of the things that, we had an economic forum that was a part of the village planning. And this was, I think, before Joanne's time. And there was a very interesting economic report based on the traffic count on Route three A. There's no big box, big box retail that's ever gonna come to Cohasset. We have two grocery stores, which some, to many seems like a miracle, but based on where, well, it's like State Park is, it really creates the three A has has a corridor that that allows people from the north to use those grocery stores and people from the south to use those grocery stores where they're the closest to them. But three A is not a a place for big box retail, it's small-scale retail. And that was a part of the the economic planner's conclusion and presentation. And I I thought that was, that was really fascinating to a lot of people. They were surprised, they were like, why can't we get a, why can't we have a Derby Street shops? Okay, so there's public meetings, focus groups, surveys and internet tools, Survey Monkey, Twitter, Facebook. I have no idea what Mind Mixer is, but sounds like the most cutting-edge. If I haven't heard of it, that doesn't mean it's cutting-edge, no, I'll tell you.
What is that? Turn the Mind Mixer on.
All right, moving on to the next one. Where we are today, so we review, so the M A P C is gonna review our past plans as a part of this first step. The data collection and updating state agency watershed associations, assessor's office, the library needs analysis, council and aging, annual reports, all of the stuff that, stuff that Joanne, the reports the chief puts together every year and every committee puts together in earnest on what's what's going on and what the problems are that we're facing. Town clerk, community organizations. And Chris, Chris, you had said earlier tonight that there are a number of master planning strategies that are going on with the library, schools, you've gotta get a forecast on how many students you expect five years, ten years down the road in order to make sure your infrastructure is in in place for that.
The district department is currently undergoing a capacity analysis. Libraries are starting their annual, or I should say their, whatever, five years, not my, their five-year master plan review. There's conversations with water that have started, so I think it's really a good time, I think, to have this global conversation.
Yeah, and there's, there's a number of kind of disparate planning going on with committees that, you know, very often may be working in parallel or or addressing the same problems, sort of over and over, rediscovering those same problems. And and a lot of them are interrelated. Not that a master plan can can weave together all kind of subsets of things that are going on in town, what are, you know, physical needs are, but they can, I think it can be a context where those things can plug into and and start to be more related as opposed to being like, what is the new term, silos? That don't, you know, that don't cross, cross, crosstalk? Okay, so we're still in key steps, data analysis, where we're going, existing policies, trends, estimates, predictions. What do we need to change? And I guess I'd say again, maybe we don't need to change very much. Maybe change is the wrong word, maybe improvement is is a better word. Things are pretty good, I think, generally in Cohasset, and we don't wanna screw it up, so what can we, what is an underutilized resource that we can improve? So analysis of options, strategy, consensus, opportunities and challenges. You know, I I I always got the sense that You know, I always got the sense that in the past, there hasn't been a lot of development pressure or opportunities. So why worry about it? The sewer was an enormously controlling component too, in terms of the village in the past, that isn't an issue right now. So how do we get there? An implementation plan, implementation committee, early success actions. And we did that with, with the 2004 master plan with some success. Outcomes, an adopted comprehensive plan with consistency among all elements. The implementation committee guides implementation process, sponsors implementation activities, keeps citizens actively engaged in planning. Often designated to take the lead in evaluating the master plan.
But by, by implementation committee?
Yeah.
Is that what Al was getting at earlier? Because obviously, if the plan doesn't have any real force of law.
Right.
Then what do you implement if you have no hammer?
That's right. You're, you're, you're dealing with a specific action plan in the implementation section. So an implementation committee, once, once the master plan is put together, people are going to look at it and say, you know, what's, what's good about it? What's, what's not good about it? What, what could, what could we use to improve things in our town right now?
Isn't that what the master plan proper is supposed to deal?
It, it doesn't, it addresses it. It might, it might provide solutions for it, but ultimately, it's not the, it's the catalyst for zoning changes, but it isn't the zoning change.
Yeah, oh, I agree. But I guess, is that what the implementation committee's brief is? To try and, you know, kind of feed the, feed the master plan through the, through the machine?
I don't think so. I mean, I think it's a kind of separate, it's a separate document that says, okay, this is what, this is what a dedicated committee and consultant has put together as, as possible options for the future. Possible options to, that are change, possible options that are improvements. And, and so implementation is that kind of next, next layer. Whether the, whether the, whether the master plan or the updated master plan gets adopted by this body or not. There may still be dedicated folks that want to, yeah, Ed?
Just a question. It seems to me, Chris, no, I'm not trying to thunder, but it seems to me the, the implementation falls, at least in major parts, to the town manager and the board of soccer. The major portions of it. There are lots of little ones, but from the standpoint of keeping the ball rolling.
Yeah.
I, my involvement with, with town government is often, you've got a lot of great ideas, but guess what? They haven't been moved off the shelf in how many years? It's the idea of having somebody who, who keeps track of it and makes sure the good ones continue to move along. It seems to me you have a committee doing it, maybe you have it as part of the.
If the, if the planning board is, is doing the master plan for the first time.
Yeah.
Then maybe we, we also do an update every three months or six months with an implementation subcommittee. I mean, we, we have the benefit of a ZAC, a zoning advisory kind of committee. We have the benefit of the design review board that helps us kind of deal with more complex things. And I could imagine that an implementation committee could be a subset of what we do here, meeting on a regular, but perhaps not as often as we, we meet.
Keep it before, keep it, so it doesn't, it doesn't disappear into the, into the midst of time.
Right, like, okay, thanks, that's great, but, you know, we had an earthquake yesterday, so.
Yeah, yeah.
We did have an earthquake yesterday.
Yeah.
Yes, incredible.
Where was that anyway?
Holliston.
North. North?
North.
Millis?
Millis and Holliston area.
That's, that's sort of west?
West.
West and north a bit?
No.
Well, glad my house is on solid ledge.
So shake one, let's have a note of crack.
It'll shake, but it won't, it'll shake, but it won't. What's that called when, you know, the earth, the earth turns to, you know, liquefaction? When the ground turns to a milkshake and the buildings just sink into what everyone thought was solid ground? Okay, this, this not a master plan issue, earthquakes really for Cohasset, but.
Probably not.
Okay, so we've got an adoption of master plan. In Massachusetts, master plan adoption requires a majority vote of the planning board. Does not require adoption by the local legislative body, town meeting, town council, city, city council. Still, many communities do present their master plans to the local legislative body for approval or acceptance. So, you know, we could, as a vote of confidence, say, we've done this master plan and we asked you for money over the last couple of years, and this is what we've created, and these are the reasons why we think it's useful. Okay, so the plan, the last point is plan as a blueprint for zoning and capital improvements, et cetera.
Clark, excuse me, is, is there value to the adoption of the master plan? I mean, is, are they grant accessible ability?
I gave the example of Comcast score. That's just one example. But, you know, I think the adoption is, to a great extent, a vote of confidence.
I totally agree.
That we're saying, oh, we looked at this and, you know, this, most of this, not all of it, makes sense.
Yeah.
And we think it's going to be good for our community to use this as a, as a resource moving forward over five, 10, 15, 20, 25 years.
How, how do you protect yourself from the situation that Al raised at the outset? Where if there's a conflict between the, the master plan and the actual zoning, you can end up in a dispute with a developer?
Well, I mean, again, I think that people say all kinds of things that are something to worry about and something not to worry about, but I'd say, let's talk to our planner about that specifically and see what the real, what the real worry is. Is it a real concern or is it something that's just a pain to deal with?
But the truth is, again, the, the master plan is, is just a guiding document.
Right.
I've worked at nonprofits, it's always our vision. Our vision is this.
Right.
Doesn't mean we're always following, the bylaws are the bylaws are the bylaws.
Yeah, because sometimes you have the day-to-day things, you're, you're moving in some direction, you, all of a sudden, you're like, oh, whoa.
And then somebody comes and says, I thought you were going to do this.
Right, and you're like, oh, yeah, okay, let's go back, regroup, we had a vision statement. And what we're doing now has nothing to do with that.
Yeah. Times have changed.
Hiring consultant. So Ralph, who's a planner for MAPC, says it's not essential. But he's like, okay, so a consultant brings experience in community planning, training, technical analysis, advanced mapping, capacities, fresh ideas, awareness of what other communities are doing, provides access to data, maps. MAPC can do all of that, provides objectivity and political neutrality, which is maybe the most important, important reason to have a consultant, provides capacity, efficiency and specialized skills. Now, I was a member of the original growth and development committee from 1999 through to this 2004 printing. And the first couple of years before we had a consultant, we had community outreach meetings. I was printing out maps of the town, doing diagrams. We had volunteer ombudsman running meetings and trying to get input. We had seven or eight of these community meetings and outreach approaches. It was good. We didn't have any money, we didn't have any consultant as a kind of beginning basis to collect information, to get people so that they understand what's going on. And that's what we're doing now. We're all here because we know a master plan's important, I think, and, and want to be involved with its success. Too much, so having a consultant is good. I remember some of the members were, you know, just wanted to write the, the master plan. They just wanted to sit down at their computer and write it. And we were like, wait, wait, we're going to hire a consultant for that. No, no, I know how to write a master plan. I saw, I got a template online. I could do this. What does it cost? So it varies. And I mentioned something about this before, where we have some pieces of the puzzle in place already. It should be a little bit more efficient, quicker and less expensive, where we're not reinventing the wheel. But they, their estimate is, it's an effort of $75,000 to $150,000 just to create an effective master plan. Now, last, the, the last master plan was done, I think, with a EO, executive order 418 money of like 30 grand and plus some mapping money and our, our planner, our town planner, sort of subsidizing the activity, me printing up as many prints as everyone needed, sort of subsidizing the effort in, you know, to the, to the extent, maybe it would, it totaled a $45,000 or $50,000 effort back then. So, so what we have, what we had as our phase one, that we asked for at town meeting was a $25,000 phase one review, what we've got in place, review best practices with the MAPC and be able to put together an RFP for the full final master plan. Okay, so getting started, obtain commitment from the planning board, board of selectmen, city council, finance committee. And I think we've got, we got that. I think the selectmen, town managers on board, advisory committee seems to be on board. So that's exciting. We're, we're moving in a two or could be three-step process where we can scale back if we need to, respond to what comes out of the phase one appropriately, not, not saying, oh, we're going to spend 150 grand. Bye, next month. We, we don't, we're not saying that we're, want to take, I think we want to take as quick as we, as is reasonable timeframe to get things done, but, but not rush the process. So in terms of resources, we, we need to create a kind of working committee to meet with the planning board and to work with the MAPC folks. I think that the request was for 10 to 15 folks. And I think that the first step of our process is going to be, we, I, I discussed with the MAPC, we need a contract with them. The first available kind of community outreach meeting would probably be the 9th of January. That's a Saturday where we get, have the people in town hall. It might be snowy. If it's snowy, then, then we reschedule. But the 9th of January, it's after the holidays. That seemed to be the first available. And then meeting like this, like we are now, a working group as a part of the regular planning board meeting once a month. And if we don't get it together to have an RFP for Springtown meeting where the process, the deadline for the warrant is really March, that doesn't give us much time between January, we've got January, we've got February, one month, March. That gives us two months to get a lot done. So I, I think we're just going to have to try and work with dispatch, but if we don't get the RFP out for Springtown meeting, I don't think that's the end of the work. Yeah.
My question was on the timing for, because what you're, what our next goal after phase one is to have an article in front of town meetings, to ask for funding for something to go into the master planning process, phase two.
Right, exactly. It's phase two of the master plan process.
Right.
Phase one is sort of identifying all of, what are our resources, what do we have available, start people thinking about it and, and trying to get, I think, broad buy-in for signing onto the process. Yeah, go ahead.
I just think, I mean, it's, it's obviously something we all need to talk about, but I would hate to have to wait six or seven or eight months, you know, till either a special town meeting or a whole nother year for town meeting to get funding for phase two.
Yeah.
If we can have some kind of a general outline by March where, where this is heading and some kind of a dollar amount, even if every detail isn't.
Well, well, we could have, I mean, Springtown meeting typically May.
Yeah, it's like May, fifth or second.
So if, if we have our phase one that runs from, from now essentially through to May, as a part of that, we, as a part of that process, we're continuing the process. We're going to try, get an RFP together for March. That's just a part of the kind of deliverables. We may not have everything that we kind of like, we need in March to, to come up with a scope, but.
You may not have.
On the other hand, I don't know that now.
Right, you may not have a scope for an RFP, but you might have enough general information for a warrant article.
Right.
I think that should be a goal.
That's right.
But you really need your warrant article by the 1st of April.
Yeah, exactly, because there's, we're, we're going down the, down that process.
If you want the town manager to put a motion.
And that would move, be moving things along. And I think the, the idea is, is if it's possible to get an updated master plan in a year or six months, instead of the six years that it took last time, that would be great, you know? So, I mean, the, the getting started part, we've done that, the funding, volunteers, staff, I mean, there's going to be some pressure on Joanne and, and Chris that, that, you know, they're, you're municipal employees, it's, it's an extra thing on, on top of what you're doing already. I'm not looking for you to complain right now, but I know you, that probably, that you understand that this is important, but it's an extra thing. So, being able to set priorities, establish a work plan, including citizen outreach, establish a timeline. And, you know, I think we can be working on that concurrently over the next couple of weeks, months, ahead of the 9th of January, if that's a penciled in, public meeting date. Yeah, more getting started. Who's going to take charge of the process? So last time, we had a steering committee in the form of growth and development. I think this time, we're talking about the planning board having a, driving the bus, if you will, with the support of the selectmen and the town manager. If we have a steering committee, how big is it? Or do we have a working group? And I consider what we have tonight, this is a working group where everybody's able to contribute something to the, the outcome. We'll have a planner from the MAPC leading, I think, our future, future meetings. But it could be that we, we don't assign actual individuals. If people want to commit, it would be great to know, you know, what you, the selectmen think that are here, or other members think about this working group for the master plan? I mean, it was like an appointed committee last time by the selectmen. It was a growth and development, it was an appointed committee, and people plugged in and plugged out of it as they had time. Yeah, Kevin?
Kevin McCarthy. Why wouldn't you appoint it? It seems like you're pretty much.
We could, yeah.
It seemed to me just, what experience I've had with these kinds of things, you probably should have some kind of committee with some kind of, I mean, especially if we're going to be spending this kind of money.
Making a, making a commitment. I mean, I think we talked about having all or some members of the planning board kind of committed as, as members of the subcommittee, maybe advisory, a couple of selectmen would be great.
I think a couple of selectmen are, are.
Community members at large that may have a particular expertise or sense of commitment would be useful too. And they're saying 11 to 15, because, and they're saying 11 to 15, because, you know, if you have 15 people, 10 people show up. But that's different in Cohasset, people are more committed here.
Some die.
So maybe the numbers are. So maybe the numbers are skewed.
Yeah, yeah, I know.
I have a reputation of being a real nudge about certain things, but I, I just wanna have Chris, and I'll help him, double check that you have the ability to appoint a committee?
Yeah.
I mean, you might be able to appoint a subcommittee within the planning board, but I don't know if you can form a public committee by yourself, so we'll check on the technicality of that.
That'd be great.
The one thing I would like to say is, and Joanne is so good about getting emails and notification of meetings out to everybody, but I think it would be really good to reach out to somebody on a couple of other committees to be part, maybe it's somebody from the sewer or somebody from what, but I really wanna plug in for alternative energy.
Yeah.
Because that's a committee that is very well populated, there's a lot of great energy and smart people on that committee, and I think a lot of that, those topics will necessarily come to the, come to a head in the discussions of the master plan over the next...
And we could have, I mean, we could have like a municipal forum in addition to a public forum that's a part of this kind of phase one process, and I think that would make sense.
Yeah, and you may not wanna create a committee just for the reason of posting and, and, you know, assuming you're all gonna be there, it'll be posted as a planning board meeting with the topic of our...
Right, right. And hopefully, we can make progress. So, yeah, if you could look into what the, what the legal options are for us, I'm, I'm okay with like a working group. I mean, I would like people to be committed to kind of showing up if we have a, once a month, you know, if we do a December 16th, January 9th, February, March, April, May, it would be like a once a month part of our planning board activity. But I think we can cover a lot of ground. How often we meet, maybe once a month, I don't know. Decide on public outreach strategy, that's something that we're gonna have to formulate with, with the MIPC folks and moving forward. Oh, reform efforts, that's sort of pie in the sky stuff where this, this law requiring planning boards to plan is, may get voted out by the legislature, but it hasn't. It's an uncertain future, but, you know, I, I don't think that the legislature necessarily has as, as high priorities, planning, planning activities at the local level. Anyone disagree? So, I can email this, Ralph Wilmer from the MIPC put this together. If you think this would help get the, get the word out on, on kind of framing a context. You know, one, one, one thing would be, how do we share information and get information that's missing? And I'd love to volunteer Joanne for being the kind of, the, the traffic cop of all master plan information, but, but I don't think that's fair, 'cause I can see her face and you can't. But we may just have to, to work on what the, what the best procedures is for getting all the information up to the MIPC for phase one, and then being able to distribute what's going on in progress. Yeah, Ed?
I just noticed one, implementation planning starts the beginning, not at the end of the master plan process. I think that's something too, that we've gotta be mindful of, because if not, I, I don't think you necessarily do that. I mean, it's kind of feasibility also.
Right.
But, but I just, I just saw that one and I just said, that's a, that's a, that's a particularly good one.
Right, somehow like, as a part of a design process, you wanna think of what's the design product at the end, and how do you get to that?
Well, it's almost as if we're having, if the planning board is kind of having monthly meetings about the master plan, maybe the, the zoning board should be, you know, it should, we should, they should be debriefed on where the master plan is every quarter or something like that, and have a conversation with them, whether they think that, that would be something that would be able to be implemented down the road, or maybe some other committees, a concert, you know, conservation, and that would be, have implementation rolling, you know?
Yeah.
So that when you get to the end process, the, all these other boards have been kind of kept up to speed along the way.
Yeah.
Maybe given, you know, given summaries and then they can, give an opinion back, and then the master, the people that are, for the master plan together can tweak that accordingly.
Yep.
So when you get to the final product, it's not like, okay, here it is, guys, you know, go do your thing and, and see if that works.
I agree, and, you know, there's, there's kind of top-down and bottom-up kind of design. I think that of all the, all the kind of committees, commissions and boards in, in our town, that there are, there are experts who have decades of experience doing what they do, implementing and dealing with the problems that they're particular, particularly faced with. Being able to get the benefit of that experience, so we don't go down the wrong path, or, so that we have a more integrated approach to the process.
Yeah, yeah. Otherwise, it's like...
It's kind of like a fourth, like, we, we would never, you know, like, big picture stuff, you know, whether, I'm not gonna bring up an example, but, yeah, I think that's, that's gonna be important.
You've gotta have people like water, sewer, probably police and fire involved.
Yeah, yeah.
Because all of a sudden, something may come out of it where you say, well, you need X, Y, Z capacity that you don't have.
And that allows you to implement it.
Right.
And I mean, that, that doesn't have to be an every meeting thing, you know, but it could be...
We definitely wanna do it upfront.
Yeah.
With municipal experts and, and then on a regular basis. Again, you know, if the whole process takes a year and a half or two years, there, there should, like you said, maybe it's quarterly, where you get, I mean, a small group together to say, this is where we're going, this is what we, what we've identified, what do y'all think?
And it's truly a town initiative too, I mean, you know, the whole towns of all.
Yeah, right. So I, I don't know if there's any other points anyone, anyone wants to make, that I think this has been useful kind of first step to get everybody up to speed on where we are and where we hope to go. If anyone has any questions, you can direct them to me over time.
Use the right email, though.
Yeah, my, my town email.
Yes.
C Brewer at Cohasset, what is it, Joanne?
M A Cohasset.
Cohasset M A dot org, that's right.
Yeah, but what's your address? Is it C Brewer or Brewer C or?
C Brewer, yeah.
C Brewer.
So if there's no other comments or questions, we'll, we'll be setting up meetings like this again in the future. Thanks, everyone, for participating.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
And unless, I don't think we have any other business for the, for the planning board. Can I get a motion to adjourn?
Did you wanna set the next meeting on the December 16th agenda?
For the next master plan discussion?
Yes.
That would be great. Does everyone agree?
Yeah.
Okay. You can keep rolling if you want, or we could say...
Whenever you want me to stop, I'm ready.
Can I have a motion to adjourn and then you can turn it off, or we get our...
Motion to adjourn.
All in favor?
All right.
I oppose, thank you very much.